Good evening. A quorum being present, the meeting of the Richmond Board of Education will come to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mrs. Shuboy, the mission statement, please.
Thank you. At Richmond Community.
Uh oh. You need to unmute, Bridget.
Sorry, I thought I did. Thank you. At Richmond Community Schools, we provide a quality education that empowers students to be successful in a global community.
Mrs. Shuboy, roll call, please.
Um, do I need to read the requirements of the Open Meeting Acts first, or can I just do roll call?
Um, go ahead. I'm sorry, Mr. Wamsley.
You don't have to read that. That's just there for guidance for you.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay. Deborah Michonne?
Present virtual in St. Columbus Township, St. Clair County, Michigan.
Angela Pacino?
Present in Richmond, Michigan, McComb County.
Um, myself, I'm in Casco, Michigan, virtual. Kyle Simmons?
Here virtually, city of Richmond, McComb County, Michigan.
Danielle Sutton?
Here, city of Casco, St. Clair County.
And Margaret Talto?
I am present, virtual, Casco Township, Michigan.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
At this time, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
I motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Do any discussion?
You need someone to support it first.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Do I have, do I have support, please?
Support.
Any discussion?
Are we amending the agenda, Mrs. Michonne?
No, we are not.
So we're going to conduct the interview?
We're actually, I have a statement that I will read at that point. We are not conducting the interviews. I just have a statement to make.
Well, if you're not conducting the interviews, it has to come off of the agenda and then you just make your statement down at the, um, at the voting part of it.
Okay, um, then I guess, I was not aware of that. I was informed that we didn't have to remove it. So for removing it at this?
Well, I guess if someone told you that, but that's, that's not proper, but however you want to do it.
Well, then I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave it in the agenda per, um, per my discussion that we had. So we're gonna leave it on the agenda.
Okay.
Do we have any, all in favor?
I'm.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I need, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I approve, I motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in the attached documentation.
Do I have support for this motion?
Support.
Any discussion, Mr. Wamsley?
Um, there was one question that I received from Board Member Talto regarding an attorney firm. It's regarding a garnishing of wages that we have for an employee that we have to, um, we have to do by law. I do not have any other questions or changes to the agenda. On the new hires, the, um, couple of them are, um, you've already hired them as employees, but they're taking on different roles with more of a notice to the, to the board. Monica, who is a bus driver, will be also working as a custodian part of the day. Stephanie Nickel, uh, who is a media center paraphr, she was a COVID-19 builder. She's taken them elementary media center paraphr. Steve Schuster, he was the assistant varsity head coach. He's now will be the varsity girls', uh, head coach for soccer. And Richard Van, Vandecar, um, he's a new hire for the district as a Richmond middle school cook.
Is there any discussion from the board?
Yes, I already pointed these corrections out to Kimberly, but to make them official, uh, from the December 14th meeting, um, when I spoke of the teacher that had passed away, uh, his name was Wayne Eldredge, so I asked her to just change it. It was not the right last name in it. And also for the January 11th organizational meeting, um, for the nominations for vice president and treasurer, I did not vote in favor of either one of those, so those need to be corrected for the motions being passed four to two rather than five to one. And I'm gonna have you let Kimberly know that she could make the official changes.
Thank you, Ms. Talto. Any other, uh, discussion?
Are we just like, that said, that was vice president and what was the other one?
Treasurer.
Treasurer, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, at this time, we are doing a band update. Mr. Wamsley?
Okay, I will start, um, with the construction at the elementary. As you can see, as you've driven by, is well underway. We had our 50% completion with the state fire marshal. Everything's good. The interior is moving along with the HVAC plumbing and so forth. Uh, roofs are being installed. Um, it is moving as planned, so we are very excited about that. Um, the fencing was put up around the high school. Um, you will see, um, that work beginning as soon as all the permits are back and finished. There was some, I believe, soil erosion permits that we were waiting for, but, um, everything is on track. Tonight, uh, uh, we're gonna talk about the athletic fields, which would be the improvements that, um, we talked about, oh, probably two months, two months ago, May event. Um, in, in the original Bond Scope application, there is, uh, dugouts and some fencing that were, uh, being replaced. And as we started looking at where, where we would place or where the, the, the construction would happen, and seeing what the, what the construction and the roads that are gonna be improved in the district, I took a minute to have a conversation with the, the bond and it ultimately came to the board about possibly relocating the softball diamond, with the idea that in future years, if the district ever had to expand on the middle school because of enrollment, um, you could expand off the back and not have to worry about tearing down, um, what you just put up with this bond. Um, and it would, it's, it's a nice, um, flow, uh, the hallway off the, I believe it's the 500 wing, one, two, or 500 wing at the middle school, uh, would make an easy connection to add on if we ever had to add on to the middle school. Um, with that, um, the direction of the board, um, was to pursue and, and continue with the drawings and get, get a scope of project and a cost with it. Um, so tonight, I'm gonna share with you the drawings, uh, but we have some people from, uh, that are here tonight. Michael Sims, I'm trying to find his design here. Oh, there he is up there. He is from Foresight Design. He's a project manager, working with OAK, or excuse me, French, uh, and Associates and all of them. And then we have Jerry McClellan here for OAK is, um, the, with, um, overseeing all of our projects. So I'm gonna share the screen, Mike, uh, and I'll turn it over to you to talk about the, um, actual drawings and what's being proposed here. So just give me a second to get the screen up here. You should see in front of you a, a diagram that represents the varsity baseball and the JV baseball site. Um, with that, I will turn it over to you.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Uh, as, as Brian mentioned, my name is Mike Sims. I'm with Foresight Design. We are an athletics consultant, working with French Associates. Um, we, we worked with the district, uh, here just last year and, and doing the synthetic turf field at the stadium, so proud to, and pleased to kind of continue the work within this bond. Um, as Brian mentioned, we are looking at, uh, some, some baseball and softball improvements to both the varsity and the JV field. Uh, what is shown on the screen, on the, on the, on the left-hand part of your screen first is the, is the varsity baseball field. The scope of work that we're anticipating with this site, right where that mouse is pointed, is what you see in green, uh, would be new masonry dugouts for both the home side and the visitor's side. Uh, the home side would be on the third base side, uh, kind of more on the left, kind of top left part of your screen there. Within that masonry dugout will also be, uh, a storage space for, uh, storing, you know, things for the maintenance needs for the, for the field. Uh, what is shown between the dugouts, as you kind of, uh, follow your, your, your mouse around there, would be a new netting and backstop system. So, uh, the intent with this would be to, to provide some, some, uh, maintenance gates or pedestrian gates for, uh, athletes to enter the field, and then a, a netting backstop. The netting backstop is, uh, is a very aesthetically pleasing feature and a very cost-effective feature, uh, to allow for spectators to, to really see, you know, a good, a good view of the, of the game and not have to be kind of looking around a chain link fence. It's a very, very nice system. Um, moving over to the JV baseball field, uh, very similar scope of work. Uh, we're, we're, you know, what you see in green there is also new dugouts for the baseball at the home side and the visitor's side. Uh, the, the, the section that's placed in between, uh, the two dugouts would also be a new chain link or a new netting backstop and some chain link fence to close off that space. Uh, along the, the service drive on the north-hand side, you see kind of that darker, that darker patch. Sorry, I'm gonna go with the asphalt path. Uh, because of the, uh, uh, the, the, the location and the, and the size, uh, that is needed to, to put in the new masonry dugout, we've got to reroute the asphalt path that goes around that building. Uh, so that's what's shown there for that scope. Um, between each dugout and the end of the baseline or there towards the foul line in the corners, we're proposing new chain link fencing. So this would be a galvanized material, uh, kind of that silver look, uh, and with new, a new protective caps. The protective cap is that, kind of that yellow capping that you see on, on, uh, on fencing to, to kind of dedicate and show the batter that there's an out of, you know, kind of that, that out of bounds area. Uh, we're also showing on the, on the, on the east side of the site, to provide new electrical service to that dugout that's on the third base side. Again, the third base side would be the, the home side dugout, uh, and we would be looking to accomplish that electrical from the parking lot. You know, this is very diagrammatic and schematic here right now. We don't know really the extent of where that power is gonna be pulled from, but the intent is to provide power to that, uh, to that dugout location. Um, what you're seeing here is at the softball site, uh, which would be kind of to the south and a little bit to the east of the existing, uh, middle school building. So currently, the field that's on the right-hand side would be the varsity softball field. Uh, what is shown is that we, we are looking to propose, we're proposing to provide one new, uh, softball masonry dugout on the home side. That would be on the, on this, in this case, on the third base side. Uh, in between that dugout and the existing dugout that's on the third base side, same thing, we'd be looking at new netting backstop and some chain link fencing to kind of close off that gap, uh, in between the new, the netting backstop and the dugouts. Uh, that shaded area that you see in the, the right field corner, uh, kind of from like center field to almost the right field corner, we, we, we know that this is a little bit of a, you know, kind of a low spot and maybe some area that has been, uh, holding water, uh, and, and really needs to be recreated, uh, re-sodded in that area to, to kind of minimize and make it, uh, a better, you know, suitable playing field for, for the athletes. One of the, uh, the larger developments of this scope, as Brian mentioned, is to, uh, really kind of upgrade the existing softball field that is there. So the softball field that you see on the left-hand side with the green shaded outfield, uh, that is being proposed as a new JV softball, in, uh, new JV softball field. So with that, that you see in green would be the new masonry dugouts for those, for that field. Uh, we'd be looking at a new netting backstop along, uh, behind the backstop between the two dugouts and, and chain link fencing that would extend down each baseline and really close in the site. Uh, also, it'd be new chain link, uh, fencing in the outfield. The scope of the work in the infield would be, uh, new bases, uh, clay batters boxes, um, same, very similar construction to what's currently on the softball field, varsity softball field now, and would match what's at the varsity and the JV baseball fields. Uh, the outfield, the scope work for the outfield that is shown would be to regrade that surface, uh, install new drain tile, topsoil and seeding it, uh, to make it, uh, you know, playable. It's really not in terrible shape right now. Uh, there'd be, you know, pretty minimal, um, grading extents, but because of the, the orientation of this field is slightly changing from how it sits now, uh, we'd be looking at, you know, maximizing, uh, the, the use of that site. Um, there's also, if you see kind of in the right field corner, kind of outside of right field, there's an existing, uh, kind of that shaded, uh, kind of curved area. Um, that's an existing kind of, uh, you know, I would say a wetland area, but kind of a protected drainage space. Um, so we've got to be a little cognizant of that, that, that space right there. We've got to be a little cognizant of that space in terms of any development and impacting that. So, uh, that's the, the purpose of relocating and kind of reorientating this, this JV field. Any questions, I guess, for, for me or for, uh, for Brian?
I have one question.
You have a question too? I'm sorry, Angela, go ahead.
Thank you. I, you said that we're running power to the baseball field? For the, one of the dugouts there?
To that, yes, that, uh, it's to the JV baseball field, correct.
Okay, and there currently is no power there now?
Uh, to my understanding, there is not.
And will there be power? Are we doing that for the softball field as well? Or do they have power there?
I believe there's already power, uh, to one of the dugouts.
There are your, there are your voices real loud, your volume.
Hey, can you hear me? I have a five-year-old, so I'm not sure if.
Yes, I can hear you. Did you say there's already power at the softball field?
Yeah, the softball dugouts have power. Uh, the JV field is the one, the JV, uh, baseball is the one field that does not have power. Um, and the one thing that we may be looking at, uh, these are preliminary plans and budgets. We'll confirm the new field, um, if we get power there, but the intent would be that, that would, right, getting power to all fields, uh, is the intent.
Okay, and, but we would have to break up, uh, uh, you're saying existing road and we do not know where the power would come from?
No, uh, we, we actually do know where the power is gonna come from. Mike's not involved on, on that side. Um, it's, it's gonna come off of one of the, uh, parking lot lights and no, we will make the provisions for that this summer and, and make sure that we have a conduit and availability to get that. But yeah, we're, we're already working through with the electrician on Lee Elementary right now, uh, sorting out, getting the right circuit and getting the right power. Um, it just won't be placed, uh, until the field, uh, work happens next year.
Thank you.
Mrs. Shuboy?
Thank you. Mike, my question was for you. You said on the JV boys' field, the path was gonna be rerouted on the first base side? Where is that gonna be rerouted to? Because between that and the road, that's where the kids walk from the, um, other school to get to the buses.
Yeah, it's just a, just a very slight, as, as Brian's kind of, yeah, just a very slight, uh, reroute. Um, currently that pathway, oh, excuse me, uh, that pathway just extends right through kind of the backside of that dugout that you see there in a very linear, linear space. And so it's just gonna be rerouted around the backside.
Okay.
Uh, very minimal impact to the, uh, to the driveway or, and no impact to that driveway that's there currently.
Okay, thanks.
Brian?
Barbara?
Yeah, Brian, my question's for you. It's something that I've asked for the last couple of years, but back what we're doing with the baseball field, that little area there where, um, people park when they're not supposed to park. We've talked before about handicap parking spots for grandparents and, and such being able to park right there and get to the baseball field. And my question then would go back over to the softball, the, those, those parking spaces that are right there that face the current varsity, uh, softball field, making some more of those handicapped for grandparents to be able to park that they're just, they're not walking from the parking lot. So is that figured? The, the softball field, I assume that would just be a matter of marking things. But what's the consideration for doing something at the baseball field for that parking that we've talked about?
Well, at the baseball field, if you remember, this is the JV, the parking lot is now gonna be redesigned at the elementary. Where that bus loop is right now is gonna be a parking lot. Cause the buses are being moved in the redesign of the elementary parking lot that we expanded. That parking lot will go pretty close, I mean, it won't be right up in the field, but where that bus loop is now will be a parking lot.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm talking about handicap spots. There's old people. There's old grandparents that need a spot closer. I, I know that parking lot's gonna be there and we're gonna have all kinds of people parking there. I'm talking about specific for that baseball diamond.
What we can do is when we do the, the signage on it, I'll get with, uh, Jerry and, uh, Dan from French to make sure that we have, uh, adequate handicap parking for the baseball field. The softball field, this parking lot that is, you know, the board office and the gym by the middle, that does not get done till the summer of '22. Um, but we can look at, you know, and this, this really won't be done, the, the, the baseball and all that till that summer of '22.
Yeah, we can, we can look at the placement, Margaret, of, of the handicap, uh, the tricky part for that, uh, and, and Dan Jerome would be the one that we'd have to run it by. There's a certain amount that are required for the building and those have to be, I believe his statement is the best spots. Uh, so there may be something that we do with signage that, that those handicap spaces are for, uh, baseball because we might be limiting. Um, but, but we, we can get Dan looking at that.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying that it says they're marked for baseball. It's just, we don't have, we don't have anything close there when people are going to baseball games. You may not think it's a far walk from that parking lot there, but when you're 75 or 80-year-old grandparent, it's a long walk. That's, I've just been asking for a couple of years and when we first started talking about this, we were talking about those kind of parking spaces, so that's why I'm asking.
Yep, I haven't, I haven't noticed though, when we do that line, that we can have it at the, this parking lot as well as look at the one by the middle school, um,
Okay.
Parking, so.
Okay, thank you.
Brian, do we have any, uh, do we have any Title IX concerns considering softball? JV field is perfectly good shape right now and then we're gonna spend all this money on a new field for them and it's obviously going to be better than the JV baseball field?
Um, what you're looking at is for the Title IX compliance is to make sure that you have equitable fields for both programs. They're both getting backstop. They're both gonna have dugouts. They're both gonna have electrical, or all of them, I should say. So there's, there is no concern that we have on it. Um, in terms of the cost, you, you know, we are, we are relocating the current JV softball in this plan, which when you redo a new field, it is gonna be a little better condition than an existing field. But there's no, there's no concerns with Title IX.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, thank you.
So the, the follow-up question on this one is, okay, if we do this, which this wasn't in the original scope of the bond, we're just kind of, we are planning to be, uh, looking forward in the future, um, for a future, for a future board to make the, uh, decision, how are we paying for it? So with that, um, Jerry, I'm gonna pull up the summary sheet.
Sure.
If you give me a second here to pull it up. Uh, in your board packet, you should have two sheets. One is a summary sheet and then one is a detail that just breaks out the costs. Um, for the sake of this presentation, I'll share with you the summary sheet. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Jerry. Um, if you wanna talk about dollars and cents?
Sure, uh, Brian. So he mentioned the, the backup, uh, and anybody that, hang on, please. John, I need you to be quiet. I just apologize for that. Uh, enjoy, enjoy Zoom meetings. What you see here is what we would call like a total burden cost of, of the, the, all the design fees and everything in there, the JV field, uh, varsity field at 175, JV baseball at 204, JV softball at 383, and varsity softball at 145, uh, for the 908,000 of, of those projects. Um, one thing I do wanna state on this is these are conceptual estimates and, and as you've seen with the other projects, everything will be competitively bid, uh, the design will be final and, and we will, we will get competitive bids. And our, our goal is always to, to get this under and as you see down below, we had $160,000 budgeted. That was essentially for four dugouts that were identified, uh, early on that, that really needed to be replaced. As we got looking uh, out there, we saw an opportunity, as Brian pointed out, to, to do a little bit more. Uh, we do have unused contingency from the turf field, uh, the 175, 734. So that was, uh, uh, through the good design work of, of Mike's team and, and, uh, the contractor, uh, really coming up with some ways of, of, you know, doing it in a, an efficient manner. Um, we were able to save some dollars, so that, that, that total, uh, still leaves us a slight variance. Uh, but we do have, uh, some, some monies on some asphalt paving. Uh, we were able to put the parking, uh, parking, the bus parking lot at the bus garage in with the high school and get that in, uh, in those dollars. And then also the dollars for the auditorium, uh, parking lot would be enough, uh, and actually a little bit more than what we need to, uh, to take care of, of this, uh, uh, budget that we have with, with the concern of, of what we see as, as available funds. So that, that's kind of the recap. Um, anybody really wants to go into detail, that's probably, uh, uh, more than anybody really wants to do on a Monday night, but I'm all for it.
Did you say that the, the, the bus garage were, part of that money were being able to use out of high school dollars?
Yes, yes, the high school, yeah. What, what we're doing this year, Margaret, they, the asphalt lot, uh, to try and get things kind of situated so that we're, we're causing the least disruption. We're doing the bus garage parking this year and we've got dollars allocated for the main, uh, high school lot for next year, but we're able to handle that with that budget, yes.
Okay. And that total, that's 610, that's what's left of that and what we would do if we were gonna do work at the odd?
Yeah.
That's a 610 figure.
Yeah, and that's, that's only asphalt lot at the odd. That's the only thing we had scheduled, um, in, in the budget.
Okay.
So we could relocate the diamond, do the additional work, the backstops and get them, electrical to all the, the, the dugout and so forth. Um, to do that, we'd have to just shift the, the dollars that are currently allocated, the remaining dollars from the turf project as well as the dollars that were allocated under the odd, uh, in the bus garage, because we're already doing the bus garage this summer under the high school project. Um, so any questions at this point? You know, from a long-term perspective, uh, I think this is, uh, the layout of them is gonna allow, um, any board in the near, in the future that if you have to expand on the, the middle school, you're, you're taking down an older field, um, that you just didn't invest money in. If you expand it to the front of the building, you'd be tearing up parking lots and roads that are just being done, um, believe this summer, those are being done. Or portion would be done this summer. So then this, this will lead us into the next conversation on the agenda with the Roosevelt Civic Auditorium. What do you do at the property then? We currently have, we, a couple, um, a couple, month, probably a year ago, maybe even two years ago now, uh, we went to the city and we had, we zoned and we had the property split into two parcels. So we have two parcels over there. One is what we call the old bus garage. It's a small blue building, got a little shed or office area next to it. And the second parcel is the Roosevelt, uh, Civic Auditorium. They share a common driveway that comes off a 32-mile road, um, and there is an easement that, uh, in order to get to the Roosevelt Civic, you have to go through the property of the old bus garage. We did put the property on, for sale for the old bus garage. We had a buyer for the old bus garage. Um, however, when it was determined that the easement was there, the value of the property, um, that the buyer was willing to pay dropped significantly. So now we look at, if we aren't making improvements to the parking lot, um, what do we do at the Roosevelt Civic Auditorium? In your packet, I gave you a copy of, um, the current lease agreement, which we are, have, um, extended it with the Dominion Church. You also have a copy of what they have paid us. So you can see, um, from a rent perspective, we get about, um, $530 a month uh, as a revenue. Um, 500 times 12, about $6,000, over $6,000 a year. Uh, it would take many years for us to raise the money to pay for a, uh, draw, a new parking lot for them. And they reimburse us for the utilities. Um, so you can see the price of the utility. They are current on all their, their, um, their bills, so we're not, behind, um, like we were with the, uh, Regional Youth Initiative. Um, you also have two reports. One is an inspection. You also have two reports, one is an inspection report that was done, um, about three years ago. Drawing a blank on the exact date, but they did a, a assessment of the property, what needed to be repaired at that time. Uh, we have done some minor repairs to keep the property going, such as some boiler repairs. Uh, we do have to have the boiler inspected, so there's gonna be some costs, uh, and certified, um, costs there. We had some siding that we had to fix on the building, uh, but we do, we're doing very minimal just to keep the property, um, at least, uh. The second document that you have is a, um, by Midwest, it was a appraisal report based on the value of the property as a current market value. This was done in, in May of 2008, uh, when we were looking at, uh, the property and what to do with it. Um, in it is, it compares other properties with similar, similar square footage, uh, similar usage. Uh, the, the, the odd or the Roosevelt Civic Auditorium, um, does have some limited space, what it can and cannot be used for. Just because of the, the, the dynamics of the building and the architecture. It is in need of repair and, and, and to use it for any educational purposes, uh, we would have to invest a lot of money into that building. So what I'm looking for is number one, uh, do we move forward with the baseball and begin the architect and the planning and all the drawings back? By reach, uh, allocating the dollars in the, um, bond? And then two, uh, some type of direction on the Roosevelt Civic Auditorium.
I would personally like to see us meet with the city and try to see what, um, interest we have together as a community to see what it could possibly be used for. So I think like forming a committee, meeting with the mayor, meeting with, you know, city officials. I think that would be well worth it. It, it was a very important building in, in my family growing up. And I think that, um, it would be horrible to get rid of it as a community.
Um, I did, I, it's been several years, but I did meet with the, the mayor and John Moore and, um, the Casco Township Supervisor, um, prior, who, prior to us, uh, leasing out with, um, the, um, Dominion Church. At that time, again, it's been several years, so things could have changed. There wasn't, um, I don't wanna say there wasn't an interest, but the financial commitment to bring the building up to code and the improvement was, was what, I think it was a, the concern on all parties. Nobody had the dollars at that time to, um, invest in it. I mean, the, it will need a new roof, um, you know, the basement, um, does need, it needs a special abatement, tiles need to be replaced. The, the Regional Youth Initiative did some improvements, they did upgrade the, the bathrooms and they did upgrade some of the, uh, the windows. The boiler is, um, it's hanging on. We, we regularly check it and make sure it works and is operational with our inspection of our building boilers. Um, but that would be a costly repair too, at least, but, again, but Bridget, that was two, two and a half years ago, I believe, when, when I did meet with them at that point.
Would it be possible for us to also maybe contact the Richmond Historical Society and look into possible historical grant funding to help restore the building?
But what about, what about the idea? Because I agree with Bridget that it is, it is a historical, there is a lot of thought of that, people that have lived here forever. But the reality is we can't afford to do any of the work that needs to be done in that building. When, when we toured that building, whenever it was, there's so much stuff that needs to be done. And as a district, we just can't afford to continue to own that building. That's my feeling. I believe in its historic value and all of that. And if someone wants to purchase it from the school district and whether that be the Historical Society or someone else, I think that's the direction that we have to look because, uh, this is my opinion. I'm looking at if we've got bond dollars that we can take from there to do improvements to our athletic fields and that, I, I mean, that's, that's the direction that I think that we should go. And I, I just think it's time, we have talked about this, we have had people interested in purchasing the building, doing different things with the building and when they get into it, it's too much for them to afford to do it. So I, I just think it's time that we, we've gotta decide as a board and as a district, we, we can't afford to keep this building.
Well, that's why I think it would be important to reach out to the city. Maybe there's something that could help, you know, assist us with. I think I would personally like to explore a few more options and also maybe, I'm not sure how much assessment costs, but the last time the assessment was 2008, maybe that would need to be done again.
So that we can waste, waste taxpayer dollars to find a building that's even more decrepit than it was? Would we, I just don't understand that thought process.
Because of its historical significance, significance to the community, just as we had said.
And for the, then, then, then.
Out of order here ladies.
Nobody's out of order, we're talking. Okay, but we're not out of order. But Angela, if, if the idea that there's a historical value, then the Historical Society can look to do something with it. But for us as a school district, we cannot take, have, have Brian tour you through the building. You guys that haven't, haven't seen it yet, Dove, I don't know if you toured with us.
I think back, but it's been several years.
Yeah, probably about maybe four or five years ago, I would think that we did. So I mean, and it's just, it's not getting any better, guys. That's the reality of it.
Well, that's what, you know, restoring a historical building is about. But I think it could use, really be used for after school by students and maybe the art and theater program or the culinary arts program, marketing program. It could be like turned into a youth center or something great for the students to go to after school. And I think if we partnered with the community or with the city and maybe the Historical Society, the three of us together could pool our resources and look into some grant possibilities and we may not have to spend any money.
But are, but is, is that what the board wants to do? We want to use our resources for a building because just when we, when we made our agreement with this church, there was a group, um, that wanted to put, wanted to do after school. There were some coaches that put together a plan and the plan couldn't work because there was too much that needed to be done. The funding wasn't there, the safety of being able to have kids in there. That's, that's what I'm saying, that that's what the bigger picture is. If the, if the Historical Society and the city want the building, they can buy it and do with it what they want. But I don't think that, I don't think any longer should we continue to have this building as part of our, our monetary problem. Cause what happens, what happens when that boiler goes? Who's fixing it?
Well, in the meantime, we would hopefully continue to rent to the church if they were still wanting to do that until we finished.
Sure, but they're only paying a minimal dollar amount. If a boiler goes in that building, pipes burst, whatever happens, it's our building. Where's the money coming from that would fix the building? That's all I'm saying.
I would like to go with my original thought, form a committee, sit down with the city and just go over our papers, let's see what we can do.
I have the concern that I have and I, I will agree with Margaret only because I've been through that building. The problem when you start doing construction in an older building is you find things that you just don't know you have and the problems. Um, I'm concerned about the liability. Um, if you saw the assessment, if you took a look at it, there are so many things that needs to be fixed. I, I have no problem if we wanna take a relook at it and re, re, see if we can get anyone with interest. But I think, um, we have to definitely consider, is this something we do want to keep in our community? And I know, I, I haven't lived here as long as some of you and I know that it's an important building.
Yeah, and you're right, Deb, but not just keep it in the community, keep it as part of our school district's responsibility. I'm not saying it doesn't stay in the community if someone's out there. And if, and if the board wants Brian to reach out again to the city or the Historical Society, that I think it's a waste of time, but if that's what we think we wanna do, I'm not saying take it away from the community, Dove. I'm saying, take it away from the school district's responsibility. We, if something happens, we are responsible for it and we don't have the money to maintain that building. That's just a fact and read, if you didn't go through everything, read it. Because it's all spelled out there for you.
I, I agree with you, Margaret, on that. I, if I said, stated it differently, um, I agree, that is the concern. I, I would like to at least make an attempt, it's been a couple of years. Let's reach out one more time, uh, to the city, to the Historical Society here in town. Um, and let's just try, but I think we need to do it one more time before we say, okay, we're gonna either vote or decide if we wanna put it on the market or not. Somebody else from the board have, um, any comments?
Well, I, I don't think we need a committee. That would be Brian's job to reach out and, and report back to us on what he heard from these. And, and Dove, you're right, we need to have a discussion. If we keep this, but put, if it needs to go put for sale, it needs to be put for sale sooner rather than later. So that, cause we can't make a move on spent, taking this money and doing this to these fields until we know what we're doing with that building, my feeling.
Yeah, um, can, just restating, the money is coming from the parking lot of the odd, am I correct?
That is all that we have budgeted at the odd was to replace the parking lot. We did not budget any other bond dollars to do any other work. At the time when we built the, the budget, we looked at, okay, what are some, the critical needs for the facilities that we need at the time? And at the time, the direction was to rent the odd, lease it, whatever you wanna call it. Uh, and so we knew that parking lot i- is probably, I mean, it's a pothole. I mean, it's got an ATV, their vehicle, it's great to ride. And I know some ball equipment like stuff sometimes use that parking lot, but, uh, um, that was one that absolutely needed to be done. Uh, when we did the first bond, we did the bond application for fixing.
Okay. All right, I still wanna committee, I wanna be involved in it. I, that, the building has a lot of significance to me as a child and growing up as an adult. I just, I, I think we should form a committee.
Bridget, would you be okay if we first check and see if the city or, and/or the local Historical Society is even have an interest? First, if we have Mr. Wamsley do that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So check to see if there's an interest, if there is an interest, come back to the board and then, um, we'll go from there.
Correct.
Any other questions regarding the ball diamond and, um, or the dollars? Am I safe to assume that there is a hold on the shuffling of funds until we know what we're doing with the odd? Or is it, um, let's move the funds and begin the planning process and all the stuff we need to do for the fields?
What, what if we don't move the funds, what gets cut?
Jerry, I mean, I don't think we're gonna be able to do that, redo a diamond. I think we're gonna have to use the existing location, um, which is where the JV field is right now.
Yeah, yeah, you'd be, you'd be looking at that, that, uh, additional, uh, ball field not being able to happen. And then the conversation has to be, um, really looked at as far as the existing JV field. Um, do we, where, where are we at with the future planning there? Uh, as Brian's pointed out, if, if the enrollment, uh, projections are showing that you're going to need some more classroom space in the middle school, uh, that starts to get complicated of, you know, we, we go ahead and spend money on that field and then the logical place for classrooms is where we've just spent money. That, that's where probably the biggest concern that I would have with it is, is where we are at with that JV softball. And then back to your comment, uh, Kyle, about the, uh, Title IX, making sure we're equal. Uh, because it was intended that we're working on that JV field. Uh, so, um, we, we would, you know, possibly have some other avenues to squeeze, you know, at the end of the bond, but that's never a good way when it comes to Title IX things. We need to make these act, you know, we, we need to make them equal, uh, as, as equitable as possible. So that would be the tough decision. Now, we, we as, as a team, uh, Mike and, and, uh, and the team at French would, you know, we'd go back and look and see what we can do. Uh, but as we sit right now, you know, we have, we have done some things with the bond. We have, uh, you know, been able to get air conditioning, um, and get some things in and, and maintain our, our fiscal responsibility with it. And we do have contingency dollars that we're carrying, um, so there would be some options there, Kyle, but it would be very tough and tight.
I'm sure I'm in the minority, but I'm all for transferring money and being done with the odd.
Oh, you're not, yeah, I mean, I agree with you totally.
I'm just gonna say, I don't have a problem transferring that money because it was just set for the parking lot anyway. It's really not talking about the building. Um, I'm thinking we can eventually, I mean, we can decide what we need to do with that building. Um, so I don't have a problem with moving the money.
But the one thing to note too, uh, Kyle, and, and part of the evaluation, I did not separate, uh, just because the way they, we had this, the dollars at the bus garage, those are already freed up.
Right.
So it's, it, there are dollars there. And, and then like I said before, we would be looking to improve on my early budgets and, and the competitive bidding. And then at that point, uh, if you needed to do something with that parking lot at the end, um, if, if the decision ultimately is that that, that remain, uh, part of your responsibility, whether it's a leased property or not, that would be something that's very easy to do at the end with the remaining contingency dollars. Um, that, that, that is an option that, that's, that's there and doesn't, you know, you, you can do this and we can still, you know, be responsible to that building at the end. Um, if there's funds available, maybe it's not a full-blown, uh, the dollars we had in would basically completely take care of that parking lot for, you know, a 20-year solution. At the end, if we're looking at just getting that to a serviceable, we can do that even as you're considering and, and not put dollars into something that may be a few years down the road, not your responsibility. So those are all possible, uh, uh, solutions.
And when you talk about the contingency, having the contingency at the, at the end, but the reality is we, if, if that building stays ours or, or whatever, in the bond issue, it says we were doing those improvements. We have to find the money to do those improvements. Correct?
For, well, for the paving, you don't, you can, you, you can shift as long as you stay within the, the boundaries of the ballot asking. The, it's, it's not that you have, you're locked in that you have to do everything. You have to stay within the boundaries of what the ballot asking was. Now, we're gonna be, uh, prudent and try to, like we've done with the buildings and done with everything else, meet everything that's on the list. And, and it's, it's not uncommon at the end for some things to be, uh, as you know, as, as escalation has hit some of these other areas and, and different times, uh, there are budget crunches that happen and things have to be reevaluated. Uh, so you're, you're not locked into having to do everything. Now, everything is on the list and we wanna do everything. Um, and, and we, that, that's, I just wanna clarify that, that we wouldn't have to do that lot necessarily to be in compliance with everything that's in the, the ballot asking. We couldn't, we couldn't go in this ballot asking and go build a new middle school because you didn't ask to build a new middle school.
Or buy property.
But the contingency money, if we're lucky, we have contingency at the end. That's always the, the great part as a district to be able to look and see things that we, we wanna get done that we're able to have the extra money for. And if I'm holding on contingency money for a building that I can't afford to keep, that doesn't make any sense to me.
Right, no, and that, that would only be if you came down the road, Margaret, and you decided that this, there was some joint agreement between you and the city and the one thing you had to do was help a little bit, that's all I'm, you, you could. I agree with you that these buildings, um, this is not unique to Richmond. Almost every school district we work in has, has that, uh, uh, legacy building and they are a challenge. Uh, they are what we would term in the industry functionally obsolete. Uh, they're very difficult to get to, uh, modern standards. Uh, unfortunately, the authorities have a jurisdiction that, that, that look at things like, uh, American with Disabilities Act and, and some of the other things that go along with, uh, it gets to be really tough. And, and I love these little buildings, uh, but every time we look at them, it's, there comes a point where if you get somebody, a, a community, uh, Historical Society or somebody like that to back it, that's, that's the, that's a great solution, a win-win. Um, oftentimes they're facing funding shortages as well though, so it's, it's, it's. Um, oftentimes they're facing funding shortages as well though, so it's, it's, it's a challenge.
Okay, any other comments, suggestions? Mr. Walmsley, do you know where we're heading now or we don't vote tonight, right?
No, I'm just getting, looking for direction from the board in terms of, I'm gonna reach out to the city and historical society, see if there's an interest. If there is, I will come back to the board and we can go the next steps of that angle. Uh, I guess then the question is, do we want to hold off moving the funds and wait till we see? Or do we move the funds? And if we have to make improvements to the odd, because it's still our building, using contingency dollars at the end of the bond to make any improvements that, for the parking particularly. Uh, I just want to, you know, just the, the direction for the planning and, and the, the scope of what we need to do and prepare for. Um, because like I said, if we have to get electrical out there when they design the parking lot for the middle school, that the second parking lot will be paved in twenty-two, we're gonna want to make sure they take that into consideration. So we don't rip up a parking lot that we just laid down.
I guess just one of my concerns is that, you know, some community members voted yes on that ballot. Thinking that the odd was gonna also be a part of it, and now it's not a part of it, is, and that's not an issue now?
That can. Odd was never a part of it, parking.
Well, we were, bond dollars were allocated to improving it.
Not to improve the auditorium.
That, you know, the auditorium was also gonna maybe be slated to eventually get improvements or being kept.
No, it wasn't.
In the, in the bond application.
Some community members that we may have been keeping that or planning to keep that when they were voting.
I, I, I could tell all the presentations I did, it was never about, it never mentioned odd. They put it in there because I, at one of the board meetings, I came to the board and said a dollar value. And then, I believe it was you, Kyle, who said, just give me what we need to get everything that we need done. Um, and when I looked at the odd at the time, um, the parking lot is, we needed that done, knowing we weren't using the building. We weren't using it for educational purposes. We were asking the community to add another gym on our high school, um, which would be, uh, you know, from a facility perspective, much more cost efficient than having to have a custodian go over to another building, I mean, just long term. You know, I, I, from an educational perspective, I, I don't see us using the building.
Tech, tech, Brian, the, the dollars were in the bus garage transportation identified as this.
Correct.
So it, it, the, the dollars were there, no doubt, uh, but it, it was, uh, the, the odd uh was not specifically stated um in any of the backup documents to uh what we had put together.
Was never represented by the Board of Education that we were doing that.
I wasn't discussed in a presentation that we were gonna be redoing that parking lot, because I remember seeing it in a presentation.
You're talking about the parking lot or the building, Angela, which one?
Parking lot, which is the part of the building, yeah, it's only the parking lot, we weren't doing anything inside the building as of yet.
Okay, but that's what you just said, you just said that we were making, we were doing things to the building.
Any kind of dollars that were allocated towards the odd may have given some people the perception that we were working to keep the odd.
But it was never presented.
It was just in the parking lot.
Deb, I think you've got three people, and I, I think, I think you need to see what everybody thinks, Brian needs a direction either.
Okay, so I'll, I'll go, I'll just ask each one of us. So Danielle, what do you think?
I don't have a problem moving the funds and then using contingency. Because the only people really at this point that are gonna benefit from us redoing the parking lot are their church people. And I'm sure they would love a new parking lot, but realistically, is that gonna sell the place if in the end we end up, you know, selling?
Okay, Margaret?
Just, yeah, yeah, I'm just restating what I said, moving it is fine.
Angelo?
I'm still, I think we should wait to hear more.
Okay, Kyle?
Uh, I am, I'm all for moving the funds. I mean, if we can find somebody to come along that wants to pay for all the things wrong with that building, I have no problem keeping it. But it's, there's no place in our budget for it, so is what it is.
Bridget?
I would like to wait in the greens with Angela.
Okay, I'm, I'm okay with moving the funds. So Brian, there's enough of us here that um, that we're at this point, let's uh, let's move the funds.
Okay, I will work with Auk and, and uh French regarding that. And in the meantime, I will reach out to the, the city of Richmond and the historical society and get that ball rolling.
Okay. Thank you to our gentleman tonight for your presentation.
Thank you.
Jerry, good night. You're welcome, thank, thank you guys, we'll see you.
Good day.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item eight of our agenda. This was our uh board member appointee interviews. Um, at this time, I just want to notify the community, we will not be doing the interview questions. We only had one individual and that's uh Ms. Sherry Zubey apply for the open position on the school board. Ms. Zubey is uh well-known to all of the current members and are, are the new members. So we will not be doing the interview questions, uh per, per board policy, twenty-four oh four, item B, number two. Uh, we only need to complete one item of three that were listed. Um, we actually have done two. So at this time, a motion, I'm sorry, at the time that we do motions, we will have a motion for Ms. Zubey. Um, that will take place during our action items. Okay, we're moving on to presentations, uh Mr. Walmsley?
Okay, um, J- January is School Board Appreciation Month. Um, and it provides us a unique opportunity to acknowledge uh a special group of people who have volunteered to hold the office of school board. Um, school board uh offered, school board appreciation month also offers our community um, and, and other communities throughout the state and nation to recognize their board members for the leadership that they provide to our district. Um, I, I am, I have been very blessed in the last uh six years that I have been in, in the district to have a group of board members that really wants the best for our, our students. Uh, wants the best for our community as well as our staff and drives, they're very hard to, to achieve that in some oftentimes uh very challenging times, whether financially or some of the legislation that's been passed and, and, and put upon us. Um, tonight, uh, we have a special guest here. Um, I'm trying to find him on the screen. Um, Michael Kleese, Abraham Michael. Michael Kleese is in Mrs. uh Holman's class and Mrs. Holman is here. Um, the buildings, the department food service, transportation, our office have put together a basket for each board member, this one's actually Mrs. Machan's. And I'm gonna turn it over to Michael right now, who's gonna tell you about the basket.
Thank you to the Board of Education for all your hard work and dedication. On behalf of the Richmond High School staff and student body population, happy board appreciation. The following Richmond community businesses donated to the Richmond Community Board of Education gifts. Hamlin Pub, Hungry Howie's, Jimmy John's, Jay's Silk Screen, Ken's Country Kitchen and Villages Cafe. Baskets and mugs were created and put together by Mrs. Hercule and Mrs. Holman and Mrs. Holman's class.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Great job.
So i- in the basket, as Michael said, the, the high school created a basket and then there's gifts from the middle school, the elementary school, the elementary PTO, the transportation department, food service department and uh from the Board of Education office. So uh, I thank you for your hard work, it is not, it is a thank, thankless job. Um, and you have many difficult decisions that you have to make and uh we do, we do appreciate uh your dedication and your commitment to putting our students first and making our community the best. So happy school board appreciation month.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Very nice. And thank you, Mrs. Holman, I see you out there, thank you for your classes work, appreciate you again this year.
Nice job, Michael, give yourself a pat on the back.
Great job.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Walmsley, we're gonna go on to our COVID-nineteen learning plan.
Yep, uh, in your packet, you'll see all the learning plans that have been approved by the board over the last several months. This is a requirement by law that every month the board um, um, review their learning plans. And then uh sign off that they want to continue the learning plan. So I'm gonna share the, oops. Okay, so the, the recommendation that is, is that I'm asking for is to revise our learning plan to go back to the original learning plan, which is to offer parents the option of virtual and in-person. The last learning plan that we have, we approved uh authorized us to move to a hundred percent virtual. So um, my recommendation is to uh return back to our original plan um in the recommendation. But part of the, what we have to go over is you have to review the two-way communication, how we'll deliver instruction. And you have to provide an opportunity for the community to give feedback. So in the plan, you will see um the delivery of instruction. Uh, we did return to in-person learning on January eleventh. Uh, we've had a, a couple cases, uh, one just recently last week where we've had a, to quarantine a class. But uh, everybody's back in person that wants to be in person and everybody who remained virtually, who wanted to remain virtually had that option. Uh, so for preschool and kindergarten, we kept them, uh, the recommendation is to keep virtual and uh, or excuse me, in-person and synchronous, live synchronous virtual. For Willa Lee, which is the K-three program, is to keep the option of in-person and live synchronous virtual. For Richmond Middle School, four through eight, again, in-person and live synchronous virtual. And for the high school to do in-person and live synchronous virtual. Uh, when we look at the two-way communication, I'm gonna scroll down, um, these are the public comments from the last one. And I will add any public comments that are tonight to the final plan. Uh, when we look at the two-way communication, I'm gonna scroll down to January, because these were all presented, there was October, November. Sorry if it's going a little fast on your screen, December. And so when we look at January, we're looking at the week before holiday break where we were a hundred percent virtual. You can see the average daily attendance for the district was ninety-nine point four eight. Just a reminder, average daily attendance rates are determined by, there has to be two present codes per student per week to be considered uh here. That could be a student as minimal as second hour on Tuesday and fifth hour on Thursday. Um, so that's the standard that is given to us by the, the ISD and state that we use to report. Um, for elementary school, we do attendance in the AM and the PM. The week before holiday break, December twenty-first and twenty-second, this was our rate, uh, average district rate was ninety-four point five two. The first week after the new year, when we were still a hundred percent virtual, uh, we had an average daily attendance of ninety-nine point two-three. The first week, and I realize there's an extra O in the, the eleven, so I'll correct that in the final one. Uh, the first week back that we were in person, we had a ninety-nine point zero four attendance rate. As far as instructional delivery, again, I would be asking the board um, amend the plan so that we go back to the original plan, which is offering parents an option of in-person or virtual uh as they see fit. Uh, we are in the process, actually today started our, our new semester and our new quarter. So parents have made that decision whether they wanted to switch, um, and we have worked through all of those. Um, is there any questions from the board at this time before we, uh, Ms. Machan, we open to a public comment on the plan itself?
I, I just wanted to say, coming from the fact that I do teach virtually um on a daily basis, I am super impressed with the um, two-way communication rates, those are amazing. So I think the teachers and students and parents getting their kids there, even the ones that are virtual are just killing it. Because it's absolutely awesome from, from me knowing the struggle of getting a virtual student on, that's, that's awesome, I love it.
I do.
Brian?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I, I just, I don't know if this is the time to ask the question, but at the high school level with the exams, how, how did exams go with anybody that was virtual, um, in-person, did everything go okay?
Uh, I have not been told it didn't. Um, I know where there is a concern regarding uh the number of students that did not pass. As a county, we are up, um, county-wide more students did not pass classes and a lot of it has to do with being virtual. Um, you know, as an exam, we looked at the, the exam can't hurt a student because we want to take in consideration, we have some students. Virtual learning is not for them, they are more of an in-person learning, hands-on. There are some students, virtual learning is for them, they, they are actually thriving and doing very well in it. Um, but we wanted to account for that, so exams at the high school level um can only improve and help a student. So if a student didn't do well on exam, they couldn't go backwards, they, they kept their grade where they were at. Uh, we did have to make that, that adjustment just because um, there was, there is concern. When we went to virtual, I, um, there was concern about students learning virtually for the six, seven weeks that we were virtually. Um, and, and what you said, Mrs. Sutton, regarding the uh, the teachers. I had an opportunity while they were virtually, virtually, I had to visit, I got to visit um virtually almost every classroom. I was actually in Michael's classroom on one of the days. Um, I think there was only three teachers that it just didn't fit in the schedule or I didn't do the link right. Um, but I am truly amazed at the creativity our teachers have, have done to teach virtually. Uh, from Mr. Salvatore cooking in his kitchen and to um, you know, just all the, the kits that teachers prepared. And some teachers dropped stuff off at kids' home, so they had the material. So um, to go back to your question, Margaret, I, I don't, I'm not aware of any issues other than what we normally face during uh exams. Um, but I can double-check with uh Mrs. uh, uh Ara and Mr. Castle tomorrow and Mrs. Bowler.
Okay.
I briefly mentioned the, the failure rate uh as a county, actually across the state, um, it is higher than normal. Um, so what we are in the process of putting together is using our uh CARES money, our, our ESAR funds, as well as our thirty-one A dollars to putting together a credit recovery, two six-week blocks that would be basically a seventh hour after school for students. Um, and uh, wh- our goal is that we are, they're taught by teachers, so we'll be doing a posting for teachers to, who are interested. But to allow students, especially our eleventh and twelfth graders who will be, or twelfth graders that are graduating, an opportunity to get those credits recovered before they graduate or so it doesn't put them farther behind. So we will be releasing very soon um, uh, two, uh, they're about six-week up programs. They're, again, they run the seventh hour after school as an option for students who wanna uh um, make up that credit. Uh, with the construction uh this summer, we're gonna be very creative. Um, there is a portable that's gonna be installed uh back here by the concession stand behind the middle school that the board office is gonna move out in January to that portable while they renovate here and get the middle school office started. Uh, when we move back into the office where we are, um, our plan is to use that portable for summer school this summer. So between now and the start of next school year, we're looking at, having at least three options for students to get credit recovery um based on their schedule. Um, we're, we're trying to do them in shorter increments, um, so that if there are students that have um athletic schedules and other jobs and other things that they, they still have to work, that we find a way to work around it. So um, with that, we also have a, a K-eight literacy program that we are in the planning for right now to address the students that are behind academically in literacy. Um, that I don't have a lot of details because we're just starting, but we were awarded a grant from the state, approximately twenty-one thousand dollars to uh offset the cost of a, a summer program, so um. Well, they're in the works and will be released very soon. Mrs. Angela?
I'm sorry, will there be options for summer school for maybe elementary or middle school students that are falling behind?
That, that's the K-eight literacy that we're gonna focus on, that would be for the, the summer program. The grant is, it, it normally is for like three through um, for the third grade reading through eighth grade. They've expanded it um to be pre-K through eight. Um, I did in the original grant, build in dollars for a pre-K to kindergarten transition. Uh, so as we plan to get more details on that one, that will be released. But yes, for literacy, we are planning a K-eight uh program.
And mathematics, maybe, is there anything in the works that those dollars cannot be shared, huh?
Those dollars are specifically for literacy. Um, however, the ISD is in the past has done a uh middle school math program. They've also done a uh Kinder Connect, a first grade fundamentals. And uh, forgive me, I'm drawing a blank on the upper grade, but it was a science theme, but literacy science theme. If the ISD is gonna run those, uh, we would look to be, see if we could, we run those here. It'd be a little more challenging just because. It'd be a little more challenging just because all three of our buildings this summer will be tore up. The movers are coming, the basically the Saturday after school gets out to begin moving everything out of the building. We have a lot of work to do this summer. But our plan is to provide as many options for kids because we do know virtual learning for kids that are are not accustomed to virtual learning or who that is not the platform that they they strive in or succeed in may are going to need a little more help and and accommodations and support.
Thank you.
So again, as far as the plan, our plan is to amend the application to be the original application. So we're no longer doing 100% virtual. We're going back to our original plan of letting parents and students decide what's in the best interest for their child. And our preliminary numbers is we have more people choosing in-person than we did when we went to virtual in November.
Brian, when we did it at the beginning of the year, we had the the dates, is this, if I choose to go virtual, am I virtual to the end of the school year or the end of the third quarter, then I can come back? Are there those kind of guidelines?
It's still the same as the original, so basically every five weeks. So basically progress report time for third card marking, at the end of third card marking, which I believe is April 1st, right before spring break. And then there will be a five weeks after that, so beginning of May, and then at the end of the school year would is the final one. And then we'll reevaluate the situation for next year.
Okay.
So, Ms. Mashawn, I would just ask if we could open up the public comment, if there's any parents or any community members that would like to give any thoughts on the plan?
Is there anyone in the public who would like to address the board about our COVID-19 learning plan? If you do, please state your name and address, and each person has a limit of three minutes. So I'm looking.
Well, I'm going to look too, see if I see anybody. They should be able to unmute themselves.
Right. I don't have anybody, do you?
I don't see anybody. I don't see any hands that people, you know, the electronic hands they do on Zoom.
I'm going to double check. I'll double check the second page again, but I don't see any myself. Okay. As we have no other public comments on the COVID-19 learning plan, this portion of the meeting is ended. Okay. Are we, Brian, we're done now with that section?
That section, so now you're on to public comments for the general public comment.
Okay. At this time, if you have any, if you wish to address the board, any general comments, please state your name and address. Each person has a limit of three minutes per public participation. Do we have anybody that would like to address the board? Okay, I'm looking.
Mrs. Holman, is that you with your hand up? I think you can unmute yourself.
I just want to thank the board this past year for everything, all the decisions you made for our staff and our students, and it's greatly appreciated, and I really do thank you. I know this year was not an easy year, and you guys had to make some very tough decisions. So I know at times it was stressful, and you got people like, no matter what you do, they're going, you know, there's always those comments, and I think you guys did a fantastic job. So on the behalf of my class, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public?
I don't see anybody else on my end.
I do not, I'm rechecking my second page. Okay, as we have no other public comments, we will move on to the next portion of our agenda. Okay, superintendent and legislation update.
Um, I will start with the district. Last week, we finished our second card marking for semester. You know, to echo what Mrs. Holman said, this year has been very challenging, and I could not be prouder or more prouder of the staff and the students and the and the administrative team for what we've been able to do. I don't think anybody ever thought we'd be running school like this, so, but I think as a team, we pulled together, and it really has has helped us and made us, you know, that period of being virtual, I know it was a sacrifice for a lot of families and and a challenge. I want to thank them because I think it was well, based on the trends that we were seeing, I do believe that we would have had more closures and more, or I would have predicted based on the way we were going. So I think it gave us a time to reset and begin moving forward. From the state level, you would, on Friday, the governor issued a executive order. Some of the stuff has changed, some of the stuff has been extended regarding plays for our winter sports. Mr. Reinhardt will be communicating all that with the coaches and to any parents that need that information. There is a hold on competition sports. Practice, as long as it's non-contact can happen, but the actual games I cannot, and that goes into effect through the end of February. The other piece that was done on, I believe it was Friday, the governor announced an allocation of 900, I should say, some dollars in the Esser funds. Those dollars have been allocated. We did receive an allocation for Richmond. Everything that we have been told about this allocation is that as of last week, things can change, is the legislation legislators were not too happy how how it was allocated. So I don't know necessarily if it would, it's going to go through as is, but everything we've been told says, do not plan on spending or expending those dollars until after July 1. So we know it's coming, we know there are dollars there. So as soon as we know that we have got them and when we're going to have access to them, we will definitely bring them to the board to be in amending the budget to reflect those those dollars. Just kind of glancing through, there was not a whole lot's been done. The legislature was on a recess next week, or last week, excuse me. They're supposed to be back in session tomorrow because of potential threats at the Capitol, as you've heard on the news. So we shall see when the legislators come back. I know committee appointments have been made. Representative Hornberger is still the chair of the Education Committee on the House side, so we look forward to continue working with her. Other than that, I think that's that's really it for us, for me on this end.
Okay, thank you. Our next items of interest from the Board of Education. Is there anyone who would want to make a comment?
Yes.
Okay. Angela?
Go ahead, Margaret.
Nope, you said.
I'll just call through. I'm just going to go down alphabetical. Angela?
I was just able, I just wanted to let everybody know that I was able to join the Macomb County School Board Association meeting, January 12, along with board member Shoeboy, we assume. At that time, the state had confirmed that there is enough funds in the school aid fund that hopefully we will not be seeing any per pupil shortages this year, so our funding, decrease in per pupil funding. They're just saying that, but they also said once, you know, they know the money's available, you know, there does run the risk of it being allocated somewhere else. But fingers crossed that there is enough money there for us when we need it this year.
This is Ms. Mashawn, can I add something to that? And I would encourage every listening person in the listening audience, please contact your representative, because what Mrs. Pizzito said is, has been true for the past year. Their money is in the school aid. The legislators and governor control the purse string. So right now, all indications have shown that the revenue is higher than expected in the school aid, and as Angela said, the money is there, that we should not even be having the conversation of a per pupil cut. But as the the board members who've been on a while and those that are new, you know, sometimes the political games start getting played, and we're in the middle. So please call your legislators. Encourage them to keep us funded.
Thank you. Ms. Shoeboy, anything you'd like to add?
Um, Danielle and I got to go to the ISD the other day for orientation. That was kind of exciting to see just the diverse, just the different people that are on different school boards. There was an 18-year-old young man that was on the board for Lance Cruz, so that was kind of exciting to see. It was, it was nice to be able to get out and have an in-person meeting as well. It was kind of like a day out for me. So that was fun.
Thank you. Mr. Simmons?
I got nothing.
Ms. Sutton?
I'm good.
Ms. Teltow?
Yes, thanks. Angela, was that the legislative meeting where they gave you that information?
Yes, it was January 12. I'm not sure, I don't think it was, it was just the regular Macomb County. Is that for the legislative meetings?
I think, I think it must have just been legislative, right? Because they're not doing the regular ones.
Yeah.
Are they?
I believe it was the legislative meeting.
Right, right. I don't know, because this is the new year, they haven't started, and there wasn't many last year, so I wasn't sure. I knew that they invited me, and it was the 12, they kind of blend in.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Okay, um, yeah, Deb, I do have something. At the two weeks ago meeting, there was a public comment made by the president of our teachers' union regarding a statement that I had made in December when we did Mr. Walmsley's evaluation and his contract, and I had made the statement that the 3% raise we gave to Mr. Walmsley went in line with what was going on throughout the district. And the teachers' union president stated that she represents 85 teachers, and for the record, the teachers did not receive 3% raises. First, I want to correct, Mr. Walmsley's increase was 2.9%, so I misspoke when I said 3%. And the teacher union president is correct. They did not receive 3%. On average, our teachers got a 5.1% increase. Also, over, there were 23 of our teachers who received over 10% increase in pay. And there were some teachers, their longevity to the tune of about $1,200 were reinstated, and that was through very, very hard work and determination and dedication by the Board of Education, who has believed for quite a long time that our teachers were, some very grossly underpaid, and we always said that if the money was there and we were able to do it, we would make make a promise and get our teachers, try to make our teachers whole. And that is exactly what we did this year, and I think it's something that people who have left the board should be proud of, and those that are new to the board should be proud that we were able to do that. And I just think it's really unfortunate to come and make a statement such as that when the teacher union president, when we, when we voted for the contract, was thrilled and said it was a very fair contract and was very happy with it. So I just think it's important to know when people come forward that we get correct information put out. Thank you.
You're welcome. Margaret, I'd like to add to to your comment here. I think we need a clarification as far as what a raise is. We actually had 23 of our teachers did not get a raise at all. They actually decreased. We have, you talked about the numbers that we had teachers who increased that were above 10%. Six of them, they're above 10% because they are now teaching this year an extra hour. 11 teachers received restoration. That means they were brought back to what they had, and you did mention this. They were brought back to where they were 10 years ago. So I'm glad that we are working on that. We had 36 teachers got longevity restored, which again, they they lost. I just, I have a concern about even a 3% or a 5% comment because for some of these teachers, we are just now getting them back up to where they should have been or where they were 10 years ago. And I hope as a board, we will continue to look at working on getting them raises. I know when we talked about, I bet sit in on some of the meetings where some of them haven't got anything or hadn't received anything, and that they left the district because we didn't, we weren't bringing, we didn't have enough money, or we weren't paying them enough. So I hope as a board that we continue to work and strive to work on making sure that our teachers get rightly compensated.
I I couldn't agree with you more, and I didn't say they got raises. I said their salaries were increased.
Okay.
And significantly. And we brought them, we tried to make them whole. That is exactly what we did. You are absolutely correct. I'm just saying, it's just unfortunate to make that kind of statement when we worked really hard to get those people where they deserve to be and where they should have been all along. That's, that's the point I was trying to, win-win for everybody.
Yep.
Win.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, at this time, we have action items. I am looking for a motion for the approval of our amendment for our COVID-19.
Anyone? We are looking at option two, is that correct, Brian?
You, if you want to go back to the original plan, you want option one, you want to amend what we did at the last one to go back to the original plan.
All right. Thank you. I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent as presented in the attached documentation and approve the amendment to the extended COVID-19 learning plan as discussed with those amendments discussed, considered, and directed by the Board of Education on the January 25, 2021 board meeting. This action amends, one, how instruction is to be delivered and has provided an opportunity for parents and/or guardians to provide public comment on the plan while reporting the weekly two-way interaction rates today.
Do I have a support for this motion?
Or?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, I need another motion or action item for approval of our candidate for the school board.
I motion to appoint Sheri Zubey for the vacant position of the Richmond Community School Board of Education, effective January 25, 2021 through December 31, 2022.
Do I have a support for this motion?
Or?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Mr. Walmsley, this is for you.
Yep. Sorry, I was just making sure I got it written down correctly.
Okay.
Okay. I apologize. Okay, Mrs. Zubey, let me find, oh, there you are. Congratulations, Mrs. Zubey, welcome back.
Thank you.
Within the next couple of days, I asked if you just come into the board office to complete the acceptance of office and the constitutional oath of office, which would be administered by a notary on behalf of the board secretary. Once that's completed, both the acceptance of office and the constitutional oath of office, the document will be forwarded to the Macomb County Clerk on behalf, again, the board secretary. So tonight, for ceremonial purposes, I will administer the constitutional oath of office to you, to Mrs. Zubey, for the Board of Education and listening audience to witness Mrs. Zubey's commitment to faithfully discharge the duties of the Board of Education, the duties as a Board of Education member. So if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of this office.
Of member of the Board of Education of Richmond Community Schools.
Of member of Board of Education of Richmond Community Schools.
Macomb and St. Clair Counties, Michigan.
Macomb and St. Clair's County, Michigan.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Mrs. Zubey.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, being no other business, I want to thank everyone this evening, and we will be adjourning at 8:29. we will be adjourning at 8:29.